Make the order. This is our Ware County Board of Commission Work Session Agenda for Monday, November 11, 24 at 3:30. And I'm gonna do a roll call first. Mr. Burris?
Present.
Ms. Pope?
Present.
Mr. Lucas?
Present.
Mr. Hendry?
Present.
Okay. Before we start, I'd ask that the manor, if he would, lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day, oh God. We thank you for how you blessed us, oh God, in so many wonderful ways. We pray, God, that we deliberate the business of this county, Lord, that you would give us the right decisions to make, oh God. Let it be done with thee in mind, oh God. But thank you, oh God, for how you just blessed this community, oh God, in the midst of the hurricanes and the flooding, oh God. We just still thank you, Lord, because there wasn't any loss of life. And we pray, God, that you just continue to bless this community, bless the inhabitants of this community, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pray that you lead us into the light of the United States of America and deliver a world which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any guest speakers lined up?
Say anything you wanna do, or you wanna wait till after? Okay, yeah.
He was asking the guests.
Oh, well, she's not only, we don't have anybody other than her.
Okay. If not, we're gonna get the resolution. Go ahead.
Yeah, she's got.
Okay, come on up. I'm sorry.
She's on back and turn.
The phone ringing. Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Missioners, I'm doing great. Did you guys receive?
I just did.
An email now?
You got it.
Late Thursday, Ms. Melinda sent me an email requesting a few items. So I tried to put those items together for you. So on the first item is the ARPA funds. And if you skip over to that last page, the second page there, the ARPA funds, it's on the back of that one. We have spent, or we've got everything obligated to spend with two ambulances that almost doubled in price from the time we ordered them to the time they're saying we'll get them. We've got the heating, those bad boxes over there, and we've got all the 911 upgrades that have got to be made that were all approved. The EOC building, the roof building, that we're just gonna move that over to the general fund, and I think there's enough overdue we can cover that. So what we've decided to do, instead of that 359, we're paying for both ambulances, is we're gonna pay for the first one out of this money. And then that'll only leave us like $99,000 that we can pull from SPOSS or the general fund, whichever one's got the best place for us to take it from. And then we'll pay for that last ambulance that will, it won't be ready until the end of next year anyway, so we can pay for it then, hopefully with some of the SPOSS proceeds that are coming in. So on the second page, that's our actual SPOSS taxes, the new SPOSS tax that we started collecting. And to date, that's what we've collected, and that's through October, that's through September's payment. We received last month's payment in this month. So what was last month, October?
October.
So that is September's payment, and then this month we'll get October's payment. So according to the MOU that the county and the city signed, we'll start splitting that SPOSS payment, 60 county, 40 city, beginning when we collect. First, it was $12 million, and then after speaking with Harrison and we went over the MOU with I took con, we're gonna do the 11 million and start the split. And then the city, according to the MOU, keeps 900K for the overpass, and they collect that first, and we collect 1.32 for the overpass. And then we can start spending on the other. I just wanted y'all to be aware of all that. And then I had the exhibit of the jobs, the accounts that they wanted done with the new SPOSS. And then on the last page is the accounts that we have for those SPOSS accounts for that SPOSS money. And then we actually spent over $300,000, actually spent over $400,000 already on the Albany Avenue overpass and the design and preliminary work that they've done. So she said you wanted an account with balances in. Well, the Albany Avenue overpass is a job number, that's how we're tracking them in our accounting system, and it's got that $12 million budget out there. The WWDA has a job number, and it's got that 1 million. The DWA has their job number, and it's got 250 in it. So when you start paying, you'll see what you've paid against those budgets whenever we print those reports. Any questions?
Yes, I have. First of all, appreciate you getting this information, Mr. York, and back on the ARPA funds.
Okay.
You could kind of, okay. So what you're saying is right now, we have a deficit of 359?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but that's with one ambulance, right?
No, this is, what you guys have is with both of them. I took one off, and that leaves us with a deficit of 99.
Of 99, okay. And what right now the plan is to pay for the other ambulance, but it won't be ready for next year sometime?
Yeah. And we gotta have all this money obligated or expended by December 31st of this year.
Okay, so right now we good on the ARPA? We don't have any deficit, got now it's like $99,000.
We just, we don't wanna give any back.
Right.
So according to this, we're not.
It's spent.
Yes, we have to use every penny they gave us.
Okay, I think that's very good. And also on the, now, my understanding was whenever the SPOSS was passed, the first 12 million, we're supposed to, like, the 12 million, that's supposed to go earmarked for Albany Avenue overpass. So what you're saying now is that, so how about explaining that to them again?
I don't know if I can, because we have looked at these numbers so many times, and when Harrison, I pitched Harrison what I understood it said. Well, then he comes back with something different, and then I realized what was happening. He was looking at an MOU that was drawn up in 2022, when it was first put on the agenda. And it was a little bit different in there. And then when I sent him the one that was signed in 2023 between both parties, he, to me, the $12 million comes from the nothing but the overpass.
Right.
The 9750, the 1350 that the county puts in, and the 900K. And then the other projects up here was listed in the MOU to be collected as well. So Harrison said, go with the first 11 million, and 11 million, according to the MOU, it says you give the city their 900K, you pay them their 40%, they save their 900K, and they keep theirs, we keep ours, and then when we extend those funds, we request them back from the city, is what the MOU said.
That's what's getting kind of confused.
I know.
And I might could weigh in on that, gentlemen, just based on recollection. I recall, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there was a limit as far as how much you could have on what they call a level-two project.
In the very first one.
Where you'd pull, you'd pull off the back. And so what we, I believe the commission ended up doing was to make it work, because the project was higher than the limit, was there's a certain portion that is pulled off the top, but then it's required to be dispersed to the city and county. And then the city and county agreed, yes, but the project's more than our level-two limit, but we're still gonna put in this amount. Is that based on your recollection also?
Yep.
Okay, that, okay, that.
So that might be, it does seem a little odd, and you're like, why are they making it confusing? But it was to get around. We all agreed we wanted the total project funded out of these funds, but it was over the amount that was allowed for the level-two that would come off the top, so it's a little bit of reworking because of that.
I, I recall, and it's coming back now.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 11 million dollars, and we could collect.
Right.
Yeah, I remember Scott.
Okay, yeah. Okay, but ultimately, we will have the 12 being toward the overpass.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, and so we're gonna start to split when we get to 11 million now?
Yeah, right now, we've got 11.342.
Yep.
So we're gonna go ahead and split that 342, 3894, with the 6040, and let them start their saving for their 900K.
Okay.
So how much is in the overpass account now?
The, what we, what we collected is the 11 million dollars.
What have you deposited in that account?
It's in the SPOSS account, and we have spent 453 out of the SPOSS. We've only spent 322,000, so that would come off of that 12 million dollars.
Toward for the overpass?
Budget.
How much money has been deposited in the separate account for the overpass?
It says 11 million, 342,000.
For the overpass, it's one bank account for all the SPOSS projects, and you have a line item with a job number that tracks it in money. That's the way they've always accounted for their SPOSS and loss.
But I'll see an overpass account on this listed account here.
Because it's a job that's created, and it's paid out of that account number. And the job, when you run a job report, it'll show that money coming off of that. You have to pay for every account, bank account.
Never mind, forget it.
You open up, and they've never done that in the past.
But the bottom line is, we have the 11 million right now that's sitting there allocated for the overpass.
Yes, sir.
Whenever we start getting into the splits now, when we start getting splits, where we taking, put that money, we just come later on with the 1.2 or whatever we had in the city with the 900K?
Yes.
So basically, it'd be really, it's like, you've got an account, but then you'd have like a little general ledger under it with the job numbers, explaining what's in there, kind of like a check register.
Yeah, it's your ledger, the boards.
What you're saying?
With all the SPOSS money, all in one account?
Yes.
Right.
Per, per SPOSS referendum, yeah.
You collected 11 million, 342,000 of that, then you spent 320-something, you said?
Yes, we spent 322 today.
I tell you that day's about.
Out of the SPOSS. And then we took a little out during 2014.
We've met our deadline.
Single count.
Correct. Okay.
What about the CDVG that was slated just for Emerson Park? I know we paved some roads over there, and we cut some shrubs back, and...
I have no money in a CDVG account, and I don't, I haven't received any money this year in the last couple of years, so that must be an old project?
Yes, an old project.
Then it's already, I don't have any tracking information on that to tell you exactly what was spent, but I can get it.
I mean, they just paved the roads somewhere at the beginning of this year and somewhere last year, the end of last year.
Right, we're going into another fiscal year that, fiscal year that I've done closed, so I've got to go back and get those reports.
I think Emerson Park was at the 21 CDVG, I think, because I think the 23 is when we're starting all this building.
They've done some good work on the roads and the cutback off the streets and away from some of the power lines and stuff, as close as they felt like they could get to without harming themselves or anything else. But they have not put up the first new street sign. I mean, there are signs over there.
You're talking about in the Emerson Park area?
Yes, ma'am. There are signs over there, literally, and I know it all goes, you know, optagon, and you learn that when you're in elementary school. But when you pull up to something that's just solid white, and it's an optagon, you know, you kind of snicker at it a little bit.
Well, I do know we have some money left in the single-county SPOSS, and I was gonna get that balance, it's like 655K. It's not enough in there to really do a road payment project or anything. But I've looked at the referendums when it was voted on, and vegetation removal and signage are included on that. So we could use that money for vegetation mowing and signage until we use it up, and then we can close that account.
I mean, they're in dire need of stop signs and road signs and that kind of stuff. I believe, and the chairman's been over there too, but I believe all the roads that we were slated to do in Emerson Park have been done. The only thing we lack, and most of the cutback's been done, they need to go back and trim it up a little bit when it gets a little cooler, but we need those road signs desperately.
I know we need a lot of things, and I'm not privy to all of the road stuff that has been going on, so.
You just write the check when the bill comes in?
I just have the pencil, and I'll be glad to figure out where we can get the money and use the money.
Okay. Can I think, somebody found a, didn't you find an account in there or something? Or a ledger that Dean had started with Emerson Park in his office?
They do some.
Probably Schuber pulled it.
Yeah, they, they, there's a road that we needed dead in on, that was off of Park Avenue.
Off of Park Avenue, right about here in the center. There's actually three dead roads down there, dead-end roads.
Yeah, they need to be signed on that.
Need to be signed on that.
People go up there and can't turn around. Okay.
And those three won't be that expensive, just a dead-end road?
Beverly don't know nothing about them signs.
I know there's roses near, because I've seen the roses, some roses near.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Beverly.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there anything else we need to?
You got anything, Dave?
Does the engineer need to come up and let everybody know that he's got the stuff over there?
We can.
Mr. Chris?
Chris, do you wanna?
Chris, would you come up?
We're just gonna introduce you.
If you wanna explain, we'll go ahead and do it at this meeting, or let the people, if they wanna go over there and find out about everything.
Just introduce yourself, what you're here for, and tell them where you're at.
Good afternoon again, ladies and gentlemen. Chris Gaines, we're from Atlas, and we're here this afternoon and this evening to go over the public involvement portion of the county and some transportation plan update, first one they've had in over 10 years.
Okay.
So we'll be around all evening.
Is that gonna cost us any money?
It's paid.
There's this flaw somewhere.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I want to let everybody know that they are over there about the comprehensive plan.
We have a presentation during the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting, yes. If anybody wants to look at it, it's down from the elevator, go to the left in that room.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's go to the agenda item, Resolution 2024-31, Reappointment Request to the Board of Assessors.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dennis Rollins was appointed to the Board of Assessors earlier this year to fulfill the unexpired term of Ms. Kathy Boyett, because she had moved out of county. And there's a letter attached, I think behind the resolution, where he was asking to be reappointed, and this term would run from January 1st, 2025, through December 31, 2027, because these are three-year terms.
Okay.
Is that gonna put him over the amount of years he can serve consecutively?
Because he just has done four months.
Okay. For a new full term, right?
For a new full term, yes, sir.
Three years, I think, 34 years.
He's got a, he just served a half term, so he'll serve now a whole term.
Has he started training? Okay, yeah, he's scheduled to start training in January for everything he'll need for the board anyway, so this'll just kind of keep him in place to let all that happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think also just for clarification, there's no term limits on that Board of Assessors either?
It's not that one. There's one, I know you serve so long, and you have to take a year off, but I don't think it's not this one.
No, it's not one.
Has anybody else applied for it, or we had just one recommendation?
Well, he's already there, he's just asking to go back in, so.
The job to be open, do we have anybody else that?
No, sir.
That would wanna serve or?
Not for this one, because there's two spots, but this is.
We need to give them a chance if they.
Well, that's, you got the, that's the next agenda item, is to appoint. This is just a reappointment.
It's a reappointment.
The first one is a reappointment. Then the second one is the opening, that's open.
All right. Okay, any more questions on that? Anything else? Item 2024-32, Appointment to the Board of Assessors.
This is an open term. Miss Kristen Landrum was appointed earlier this year, and her term will expire December 31 of 2024, but her employer is relocating her, or she's being relocated because of her employment, so she will be outside of our county and unable to be reappointed. So this is where we have new appointment needed. And Mr. Andrew Christian Walker submitted a letter requesting to be appointed. He is currently employed as an appraiser, he has all of the required training, and Bill, until you know more, he's, he's got everything they need, probably and then some. These were the only two names I have.
Is he here tonight, Mr. Walker?
No, he's not here. We did reach out to him the last time, and we had another gentleman that submitted a letter, and he actually spoke with me about it, and just basically because of the training schedule, he didn't, he decided he wasn't interested. So Mr. Walker had put in his letter, basically, he's already certified, said he wouldn't have to be certified, he currently works in an assessor's office in another county, which is legal for somebody to do that, and they signed off, saying it was good with them if he did serve over here, if he does live in Ware County.
So he would come to work, ready to work.
He could come and be ready to sit on the board and understand basically the business that we conduct.
And I think that's a plus right there.
That's a big deal there.
Yep.
How long does it take to get certified?
It's just usually the one class, you'll do the 140-hour class, then you're required to do 20 hours a year. So typically, what the board does is they'll go to one conference a year, and that keeps them certified from having to go to other classes, but they do take other classes if they wish to do those to stay certified.
It's a lot of continued education in there, isn't it?
Yes, sir, yearly.
So Mr. Walker's clear with all that? He just has all that? Thank you. You happy with it?
Yes, sir.
Happy with that?
All right, then, more on him. Not carry those. Okay, Resolution 2024-33, Reappointment to the Okeechobee Regional Library Board.
All right, Ms. Carl Parker was appointed to fulfill an unexpired term, I think that was last year she was appointed, and that term will expire December 31st of this year. She has submitted a letter requesting to be reappointed, I put that in your books, because I got it today, but the library also submitted a letter requesting that she be reappointed. Her term would be for five years, it would run from January 1 of '25 through December 31 of '28. And I believe in her letter, she said she was elected to be vice chair of the board if she is reappointed.
I think Carl's done an excellent job over there. She survived what went on last year with the darn library, so she should be reappointed. I agree.
Yep, we done a board here. Anybody else on that? Anything?
She's done a great job.
Okay, just carry it over.
All right. Sorry.
Okay, the Purchase Request for a GM Chevrolet Duramax 6.6 L5P Full Delete Bundle.
All right, this item is, yeah, a request to install that, because they are running one frontline ambulances and three reserves, and these two were the newest vehicles they've got, and I'm gonna let Dr. Bill Harley explain more of that to you, what they got going.
What the? I know it is too damn right now, is that a?
There's two. First the fuel front telling you that.
Thank you. Yeah, this is based on the dev systems on the ambulances, which honestly initially performed better than the old days, when we had the Tri-XOSS system, which we had removed for sure, but now we're getting into these filters, stopping up, making ambulances go into limp mode, and eventually shutting them down completely. So we're back where we started in terms of needing to remove those systems. And we've got one completely down, we've got one that we are able to use around town, but living at speed, and need the system replaced with oil. I think you have the estimate, it's gonna be about $5,000 per ambulance, and I have four, four that we need to do eventually. And there, my understanding is that the shop can do the work.
Yes, sir, I got the change, it's complimentary.
That's excellent, that'll save us a lot of labor, but we really, we've got to do it, and I was gonna say also, in terms of EPA, it's one of those things with emergency vehicles, that they neither bless you or condemn you for doing it. If you choose to do it, I guess you could say look the other way, or allow it, but on non-emergency vehicles, of course, you couldn't do this legally. But. Is any of this, Dr. Bill, is any of these the ones we ordered? The ones that we've just bought in the past year and a half? They're gonna have them too. They're going to have them too. They sure are. And you can't take it off, take it off in the first year because it will ruin the warranty.
Right.
So we have to wait a year on those. I can check and see if they can order the chassis without them, because the chassis have yet to be delivered. But honestly, I'll, I'll, I think it's too late in the game, but I'll, I'll be glad to check.
Have we got any of the new ones we bought?
I, I was.
Not what's been over last year. They had delivered, was it last year?
The new one we had, we got at the beginning of this year, but that was the one that we ordered two years prior. The ones that we're getting now are the ones we ordered last year, and we won't get those until the end of next year.
We got the one we ordered twenty-two in May.
And that was the first one we ordered.
That was the first one. And the second will be November of twenty-five.
And the brand new one that we just got is one of the ones that needs to delete system. It's the one running in limp mode right now.
And that's a new one?
No, that's the one.
It's a brand new one?
This one is the other one that's completely out of commission and ready to be out because it needs one as well.
So.
Why don't we run the warranty on them since it's letting the warranty fix it?
It, it's out.
Both of those should be out.
Yeah, it was.
Out of warranty?
Yeah, we, we shouldn't have any ambulance before they're warranted by now.
Just to, you know, just for some more clarification, what it is, is when you're running this dev, it's running through a filter, right?
Correct.
Regen through that filter. That filter gets clogged up, you have to go have it baked out.
That's correct.
Generally, that costs, take about two, three weeks probably, get somebody to bake it out, then get it put back home, right?
Yeah, but we run our trucks so steadily, and they idle so much, that when that clog happens, when you take that two to three with project on it, it won't be equal.
Yep.
We can, you're not double it.
That's right. Okay.
There's something else to point out. Y'all got state inspections coming up, right?
We do have state.
And they've got to get these licenses in service in time, so they'll pass inspection.
Licenses to continue to.
Checked off on them?
And it's all approved by EPA to take them off?
This estimate was from who?
Do you think it's approved?
The diesel dudes?
Diesel dude. Where are they at of?
It's an online. Each, each system is truck-specific. So you have to turn in the specific VIN number for that vehicle, and they, they send you the delete system based off of that specific truck. So each truck will have to, they'll have their own system.
Okay, this is.
It's an online.
This is five thousand seventy-four dollars just for the parts for us to send? That's no labor?
No, the labor will have the.
Our show.
Um, that's, I'm, just right now, I'm saying that's way crazy too high. I, I believe we can get the labor and all done and the stuff for under five thousand dollars. Don't know the time limit, but I know they're deleting these trucks, labor and all, for about four thousand dollars. And I know there's a guy in Pearson that does it.
Does he have the system though that?
Yes, he does them for Woody Folson, you know, he's doing them for these dealerships. So maybe we, I get a, you know, get y'all contact from him or whatever, and, and let's see what he says on this. Cause just ordering five thousand dollars for us for parts, and we have how many we got to do?
Two.
Two right now, but in, in time, it will end up in four.
And then the labor on it, so that seems like a little much to me.
Now, is that five thousand per?
Per.
Yes, yes.
It would be ten thousand one forty-eight for both.
And then we could get labor and all. I know they're deleting these trucks for, you know, thirty-eight hundred, four thousand dollars, the guy in Pearson is. And that's parts, that's labor and all.
So what end of? I, is it going to be, we're, we're still having emission code errors and everything else? Is it, two is taken off?
Well, he's doing, he's doing them for, I mean, he's doing them for Walker Jones, he's doing them for Woody Folson, so he's GM certified. I mean, you know.
I don't know a lot of cars, but there, there is a two, there's a, there's a couple of them that you can take, right?
Do you have any, are you a mechanic? Do you have anything that you might want to add to it?
That the guy back there.
Yeah. Would you come over here and let us, learn us a little bit? Are you a mechanic?
No.
Oh, you're not?
I'm just in charge of fleet maintenance.
Yeah, he does the maintenance out there.
So with this kit, it has all of the sensor air, the program that comes with it, everything, the down pipe and also the catalytic converter and the pipe. If you were going to go through and redo that pipe because it's so clogged up, just that pipe alone, I've been told in three different, you're looking at either from, I think the lowest one was fifty-six hundred dollars just for the pipe to replace. All right, we're, our last truck, we have the, the twenty twenty-three, the one that's down in limp mode right now that we're still running out of, already has four thousand hours on it. So, and that's what we're looking at, you're going to be looking at doing this over and over again every four thousand hours. It's only got forty-two six is the mileage on it.
Yeah.
So, and it needs to be something where we're not running into these error codes, also with the, it has injector codes, errors in there, and that back pressure. So I don't know if anybody that's going to be able to get the pipe, do the back pressure appropriately, and delete those sensors.
Have you called around for the local people here?
We have, and they're, most people were not personally.
Have you, uh, what about the guy in Pearson? And I don't know his name off, right offhand, but I know, uh, the mama mechanic, he mentioned it the other day to me.
We can get it done, and it's in the same, because here, we're, her inspection is during November. So we have no time to really sit and wait on this.
We're a little late on it, huh?
Well, we've got, and we've got several truck issues we're trying to get taken care of. And if not, it's going to end up being a fine for us, I believe, for them to come out and reevaluate our trucks. And I'll only bet we'll take that truck out of service.
So what we're saying now is we're kind of held to getting these two done with this price right here, pretty much.
Because we are down, we, we run these trucks, our call volume has increased forty-five percent since I came over in, what, nineteen? And we're still running the same amount of trucks. And so we're, we're constantly running these trucks to, you know, their end. And they're not sitting still. So we, we've got to have these parts that give us back license so we can have these trucks continue to run the service. And, and, and maybe maintain license.
The EPA says we can take them off?
So then.
Was that what y'all saying?
An existing regulation based on manufacturer side of it, it doesn't really have a real depth on our side. It says that you're allowed to make emergency modifications to it. All of the language in there, it says in the CF forty, part eighty-six, and I believe one thirty-nine on this. And their last rule on it was you, that these were not considered denial or it's probably they used, they used the word denial kits or something, den, or denial of devices because we're an emergency service. You're an emergency nine-one-eight. So.
The last time I researched it, very, very, they said, well, bless it, we don't curse it, but they don't, they didn't say you could do it.
Yeah, I agree. We'd lose all of our warranty and everything, wouldn't we?
Then you have to be out of warranty.
They're already out of warranty.
I'm not.
Duramax special was five, jumping about a hundred thousand miles.
Yeah, that's one of Duramax, who's had a Duramax, then.
I believe it's all five years, hundred thousand mile warranty.
That's.
And that's on a Duramax.
Even on.
Drive, a drive train. I mean, you know, I understand these filters and all is not going to cover the drive train.
Angles package, so you're looking at a whole different truck. Basically, when you start handling angles package on it, it goes to a manufacturer as a parcel truck. It's not a full truck, and then they deal with angle. So it's not an actual full truck when we, when they buy that chassis. So it doesn't come with a.
So it's cabin chassis, with cabin chassis, you're only getting a three-year, thirty-six thousand.
Is that a full cabin chassis? Because this isn't a full cabin chassis. You're looking, this is a, under the fleet, it is a parcel vehicle. They said Ford sells it to the manufacturer, or it's under us, but it's to the manufacturer, the parcel vehicle. Saying that they're going to complete the vehicle as an ambulance. So it's a totally different package as far as.
So what kind of warranty are we getting on?
One year.
Just one year total?
Overall.
Everything on it, lights, everything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bumper to bumper, pretty much, one year warranty. Okay.
I mean, the drive chain, I don't know.
I haven't, I don't see anything on that.
Well, it should be a GM. It, it's come from GM. Are they Duramaxes or Fords or?
Duramax, yeah.
Should be a same drive train warranty that GM offers.
It should be, and I'm going to definitely check up before we were to make it.
Yeah, but we don't have a lot of time if you only have.
No, no.
Um, you know, so.
I made that assumption really, but it's one year, but yeah, we, we, we serve.
Okay.
If it's three, three years, we'll probably be able to do any of them.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did mention about the, the packaging as far as the, I guess, the parts and everything, but didn't I understand Larry said that his crew, they could do that out there?
Yes.
So, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't incur any labor charge then?
Correct. It, it will only be for the parts, since the county.
And right now, like I say, we, we, we need them. I mean, it's like we needed them yesterday, right?
Yes, because we have, this, this isn't our only issue. We have, we have several that we need to, you know, maintenance done on.
One needs to go back to customer, it's, it's imperative we get this done.
And honestly, if we voided the warranty, I, I don't, I don't see how we can get another.
I mean, as much as we're running these trucks, you, you're going to sell the parts of the end. I mean, honestly, you're not going to sell this as a truck. By the time we, it, by the time it runs its life cycle, we should be honestly cycling out of these trucks every five years. We're not, but the, the life cycle out of the truck period is approximately.
So let me, let me ask both y'all something right now. So right now, if we approve, if we approved it, how long would it take to get these, this part right here?
I think it was a week.
About a week? And then, but Larry, how long would it take?
Has your man ever done it before?
Probably day, day and night.
Yeah, there, it's, it's probably going to take him fifteen to twenty hours to do one truck.
Has, has he ever done it before?
He's never done, he looked up what they had recommended, and he's, he's confident he can do them, and he is super sharp on this stuff. He said it would be a problem. He said it would be a five-minute job. He, he would, didn't think he'd have the problems.
I guess what I'm concerned about is right now, you got these two ambulances just down, and you know, God forbid something happen, you know, I mean, sometimes that call volume gets up high, where you got three or four ambulances, got to be dispatched at the same time. And, you know, and we got citizens that we got to be concerned about, and so.
I mean, at this time, we, we're limping along. We have really no reserves at this point.
The reality of the situation with the ambulances is that we have one frontline truck running right now, and our three reserve trucks are having to be running as frontline trucks because the trucks that we have sitting out at the, at the shop can't get fixed because this is what needs to be fixed.
How long, how long, how long have they been sitting out there?
Seven's there for about three weeks, and six has been there for four.
So, and I guess I'm trying to find out, I mean, you're coming now with it, but is that something we knew three weeks ago?
They're coming now because of the amount of research and making sure we could do it and, and other stuff going on and.
They exhausted everything that they do trying to knock through this.
It's just kind of hit us at the wrong time, right before inspection. Yeah.
And if we didn't have to wait on ambulances that you got ordered for us, it would already.
Would be okay.
We waited three years to get the first out. I mean, yet to get it, but when we get it, it's already been three years since it got ordered. So we, we were doing, I think, proper planning, but we, then we hit the supply chain issue. And all of a sudden, all the chassis were out there to produce. So it's kind of a perfect storm. And, uh, that, you know, we have one grounded over this issue. We have one grounded over a bigger issue needing an engine replacement.
Yeah.
And I've only been back a couple of weeks from having surgery, but, you know, we could have moved a lot quicker. But that's why I'm behind this thing a bit, behind curve.
Well, I think, you know, based on what Commissioner Higgins was saying, if, I think it's worth at least checking into just to find out, you know, if this guy, talking about the Pearson eight, and if he's doing it, he's already knows just what to do. And not taking anything from Larry, but you know.
Well, we got Mr. Barry back here. He, he, ain't he here? Did I say Barry? Do you know anything about that? I'd like to ask Barry. He's a.
I'd rather he could do it that soon, because, you know.
Can you do this?
I think in nineteen, it changed, that computer had to be sent to California somewhere to be programmed, because those program kits won't work on them.
Well, that's what I was thinking. If, if it's all under that, under that, that, um, computer, it's going to be hard.
Last time I checked on was ten thousand dollars to delete it because the computer would have to go, I think, to California to make programs.
If somebody don't know what he's doing, then we, we could be without an ambulance.
The older ones, you could do that. These new ones, we couldn't do it without.
Right. Okay. That's all. Thank you, Barry.
I think we might need two minutes.
I don't understand this at all, but, uh, maybe we need to look around, if they can get the right person. I'll tell you.
If you're okay with a professional that knows what he's doing there, you know, that can, you got a computer.
Those are the org that we use at Gragas who will not do it because of the fear of EPA.
Yeah.
So they run into that as well, but.
Right.
That's my whole point, that if we have it done and.
That's what I'm saying.
Something this sensitive, we need to have somebody know exactly, and not taking anything from the guy. But if they've already done it and know what to do, I would rather go with somebody knowing how to do that versus, you know, somebody said, well, they feel like they can do it, you know.
Let us, would y'all check that out a little closer and come back to us and let us know, somebody that.
Is this guy, have you done business with him before?
This one?
Yeah.
No.
So.
You're talking where you got the, get the parts from?
No, this guy right here, the one that gave us this quote.
That's. Oh, that's just on the parts. That's just on the parts.
That's just ordering the parts.
I mean, that's probably good, but we're talking about somebody that installed.
But if they have to send the brain off.
You know, so that's where the, the programmer comes, is the ECM override, the tune is actually in there, being number specific.
If he flashes that bio, he said he don't know what he's doing.
It's, it's an update. It's not a, it's not a flash. So it's like, it's like a tune.
Yeah, if it's like a tune, he's going to put a different tune for the delete in it.
Yeah, I had a friend of mine that had a.
Pretty calm.
Had a diesel Ram, big old engine in it, Duramax in it. He don't run the program on it. Didn't current, didn't current three different times, three days in a row. He ended up calling Walker Jones, they'd come and picked it up twice. When it happened the third time, they told him he was on the zone. So they knew something had, he was doing what was causing it. And that was just a program that was flashing nothing. And he worked for EPA.
SMS, you know, we have seven vehicles that are not hundreds square miles, counting their word about ourselves. I know it doesn't work in a way, but it's been a disaster.
Well, I, I think we, we need to kind of really get this on the front burner. I mean.
I think we, we're, we're fixing it for y'all. I mean, doing this, but we want to be sure. We don't want to do something that we.
We don't want it to bite us.
We don't want to come back. And y'all either. I don't want to do something, let y'all do something that, if we wanted to be.
Everything is, sir, I, I can flex it. The customer works, they got manufacturers there.
Right.
And they said they have people they refer us to, everything was going to be ten to fourteen thousand dollars. So, and that's sending the truck off as well, time back and forth. You know, it's something like you said, we got to have these trucks back in working order, stocked, ready to go for inspection in December. we gotta have these trucks back in working order, stocked, ready to go for inspection in December.
Okay.
So otherwise, the back truck comes off the road until they can come back out with an inspection.
Rick, can we just hold him tomorrow?
I was gonna say too, uh, we may get into an emergency where we have to borrow it for rent, because we're running reserve trucks, if they get out, like has been said, we don't have any reserve in place, is there any way we could communicate with the commission in the interim, I mean, at less than a month, like, will we get more information?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if we could, we could do that, agree to, if he could get us.
You can just text him.
Okay, if we can get a, that's what I was just asking Jennifer about, if we could find out who it is and get some information, we still may be able to vote tonight, just change who it's with.
Okay, we may let y'all know the date then, we can find out, okay?
Excellent.
Listen, okay, all right, appreciate it.
Thank y'all, that be it.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we hear that noise. Okay, E, purchase request for a vehicle maintenance, rolling air hydraulic lift for thirty K.
Thirty thousand pounds.
Thirty thousand pounds capacity.
This is a request to purchase the drive on lift, it's got a three hundred and seven inch wheelbase, and will accommodate dump trucks and ambulances. It includes a fifteen thousand pound rolling air hydraulic lift jack with a thirty thousand pound lift. The complete purchase price for all of that is fifty five thousand, four eighty nine twelve, and includes installation and delivery. And then he can tell you the rest.
Okay, Larry, what you got?
This here's a, this is a drive on lift, and we need another lift for shopping, got two lifts, and right now, everybody in the shop is full, and they have on jacks and blocks and everything else. So I need another lift, so been, I'm in the market for one, I'd like to get one that's a drive on, it's big enough that I can pick up a dump truck or some of the larger vehicles, where we would need to drop a transmission or something like that, and crawl around in the dirt. This includes installation, has two rolling jacks on it, where you can actually jack up both handed vehicle off of the ramp if you need it to. It includes installation, any kind of training we need, I mean, it's a turnkey, turnkey deal.
And this is something that you really need out there, to show.
Yes, we need a new lift.
And I was looking over it, and uh, one thing I like, it's local, I say local, Baxler, what has come there, that uh,
Yes, sir.
And have we ever done it, and worked with them, or?
We, I've had them repair one of the lifts we have now, because that's, that's all they do is that type of work. And they act, just come here, actually furnished the city rod with all of their equipment, and they need the rod. So they're, they're in the, been in business for a long time, and like I said, they swung by and serviced a couple of our lifts, had cylinders lifting, pulling down, they come by and pick up the lift, carry the pack ceiling, bolt back, and everything works good.
Mr. Larry, have you talked to them, and they'll still honor this quote from five?
I told him the other day, and, and he said, he said he'd stand by this for a little bit longer. Should be coming down now, eh?
Sure.
Should be coming down now.
Why, why are you needing to pick up a dump truck? Why are you needing to pick up this for?
I, I just, your, your ambulances, your fire trucks, everything.
What you gonna pick them up for? We've been going this long without picking up dump trucks, you jack it up, ain't nothing going in a truck.
Any, anytime we can make something a little easier, if it's better on your help, and you keep helping longer.
I don't see where we need that, we don't have a lift, jack now, a lift, ambulance.
Yeah, I, I, you ain't got a drive on, that, that old lift they got at Aaron Berry, probably back in the, it just will pick the ambulance up, the kind of overtaxes are gone.
So this is gonna be wide enough for the tires in the back?
This, this is, this is a nice lift. And, and you ain't looking at the tires, you're looking at the weight that it'll lift safely.
Aren't there no drive on ramp out there? There's, there's a drive up.
That's, and that's what this is, is a drive on ramp.
And you are also saying that, you know, sometime you have to pull transmissions, and different thing that you got to get under there, instead of having it get down.
Every, everything's easier if you can get it up where you can reach it, and you ain't laying on your back and crawling around anymore, I mean, but. Doing in the shop in town, most of them got lift in their back.
Hey, one time, there was a drive over pit for this, but that's been covered up or.
Yes, sir.
Put out of service, right?
So really, all you got is a, you got one post lift and one drive on lift out there now.
So this would do what you need to do? Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, it over. Need managers come in?
All right, I've got a couple of things, um, the latest update on the State Street overpass, uh, just got an email from Dusty Mercer at DOT, and he said the project let date is still scheduled for May of twenty twenty five, a final field plan review should be coming up in the next month or so, which is the last plan review prior to the project being let. He said if anything else happens, or any other problems are encountered, that he will update us, that's the latest from there, and the other, um, if y'all.
So you said May of twenty five, they're gonna start?
They're gonna let it, let it on break up.
This one, the, um, Georgia State and Forest site there on Clifford Road, the next step was to get it surveyed, I've had that done, this is the draft of the survey, and I was told if it looks good to both parties, and Jason's here, if he needs to say anything, then like, we can get it approved and recorded and ready to move, to get it transferred. So.
You got any comments, Mr. Jason?
I think it looks good, I've got no issue with it.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I, I did have a call from somebody, um, living on Wadley Road, and lives on the other end near the bridge, and was talking about the striping, said it's non-existent at night, you just, you can't see it on the other end towards the school, you can see it, so I told her I would let you guys know, and check it out, let me know what to do.
Probably the wrong way, probably reflecting the other way.
Yeah.
Well, Jack, like, there's nothing there or on the bridge, like on the edge of the road or anything, so you, if you're not familiar, you could run off the edge.
And the bridge is on across Tenega Street.
Yeah.
And this was from New Mexico to the bridge, I think, that she said, I left a note on my.
Right there at the curb, by the, by the.
So, I can give you the exact spot later, I just wanted to make you aware, and that's all I've got.
Okay, anything else?
I was just gonna mention to Jason, I appreciate your work on this, I mean, it's been a long time coming, I think we've been working on it for about a year. Uh, and we appreciate what you do, and uh, and I'll say it again, and I've said it in the past, I think we need to be working with Jason, because he works with us, so I think he needs to be included in almost everything we do.
Well, you brought this up to me Tuesday, I stopped by his office same day, and he gave you what I needed, I contacted the surveyor, and now you've got the draft.
Okay.
And see how, see how long we've been waiting, and I passed for this for what, six, seven months ago?
I don't know, I haven't kept up with.
We gotta go.
We gotta go in now.
You gotta go in.
So I thank you, Melinda, the job we're doing, I thank Jason, and satisfied with everything.
So all we got to do now, just come up with that money.
I'm, I'm, you said you were gonna.
Timmy said he gonna get the money, he got the money.
You know, that's all, we gotta come up with the money now.
Tell him to make a donation.
All right, Commissioner's comment, y'all got anything?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say, uh, first of all, I wanna congratulate all our veterans, and extend my appreciation for all that they've done, you know, for our country, and, uh, people have, some of them have, you know, come back, maybe had injuries or whatever, but I just wanted to extend that to all the veterans, you know, and uh, I'm not a veteran, but uh, I have a son that retired Army, two daughters, two granddaughters, that are both in the, uh, Navy, one just went to Italy about a month ago, and another one just came back from Bahrain, had been over there for eighteen months. So uh, I just got a great appreciation for veterans and what they do, and uh, I don't think we can say thank you enough for what they do.
I agree.
Okay, the next thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I kind of wrote something down, so I wouldn't forget it, but uh, on October seventeen, twenty twenty four, around four o'clock PM, I went to our county airport to check out our new storage building that we approved for construction. As I, as I was walking back to the terminal building, a corporate jet had just landed, and uh, typed in front of the terminal, and three executives from a national food chain exited the jet and made their way to the terminal building. As I greeted each of them and conversed with each of them, they indicated their interest in Waycross and Blackshear as potential sites for locating their businesses. They were delighted and ecstatic to be able to use one of our new airport vehicles to transport them to these potential sites in Waycross and Blackshear. Employees Justin and Adam, and I believe Becky was out there also, they were very accommodating to this group, they really appreciated them, and they showed them what I might say, southern hospitality. All employ, all employees at the airport are very dedicated, and really seem to enjoy their jobs. This corporate jet also purchased a hundred gallon, hundred and fifty gallons of jet fuel. I think we have an airport that we should all be proud of, our airport manager is constantly exploring ways to improve and enhance our airport. With that being said, I would like to say, take this time to personally thank Frank and his crew, all that they do at the airport, and for our county. Also, I would like to say that, you know, leadership, to me, is picking the right people to do the job, then having the self-restraint to allow them to do the job, and also furnishing them with the tools necessary to get the job done. So I just wanted to say that, and uh, you know, we have a lot going on, and there's a lot of positive things happening in Waycross and Way County, and anytime I think I can plug in something for everyone, for what they're doing, I think it's incumbent upon me to do so. And not only with the airport, we got all our different departments, I think, that if we try to allow these people to do their jobs, I think they'll be more efficient in what they're doing, and I know sometimes we, you know, think that we know what to do, and what, but we are basically here as commissioners, policymakers, and this is why we have professional managers, and if we have any issues, we need to address those issues with the manager, and then the manager goes from that point on, and if the manager's not doing their job, whether it be he or she, then we need to call them on the carpet about that. But again, I'd like to just say like the airport right now, because the airport has come a long way, even the guy Steve, that used to be the manager out there, he was out there once when they were having that red tail event, and he was telling me about how much improvement he had seen since he left there. Now, this is another former airport manager, so I just think it's good, and I think that the crew that we have out there now, they're doing an awesome job, and I pray that they would just continue to do what they're doing, because people are watching, people are seeing Waycross. And like I said, these are, they, and I purposely didn't call their name, because I don't think that would be the right thing to do. But they were here, and they were very happy to be here, and happy to just be able to use the vehicle, and uh, so I just wanted to say it, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this time.
Thank you. Anything else? Any more, a little mission, comment? If not, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Making adjourn, all right, we got a public hearing, and it'll take a few minutes?
Yeah.
Ten minutes?
Take ten minutes.
Ten minutes, fine.
Ten minutes, we'll come back to the public here.
Just one more.